Danobo?
Yes.
Berdell Jackson?
Yes.
Jeff Larson?
Yes.
Gary Wotka?
Yes.
Buck Pucknridge?
Yes.
Motion passes, the minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is any public comment on any item that's not on our agenda tonight. If anybody wants to address the board on an item not on our agenda, does anybody want to address the board? I've seen anyone, so next item on our agenda, is there any conflict of interest any board member wants to tell us tonight?
Mr. Chair, I'll be stepping down on item number two on the agenda.
Okay, just remind me when we get there. Anybody else? Okay, we're going to move into our public hearing session, section of the meeting tonight, and I do have ground rules in the meetings. When you want to speak, you'll get your chance to speak after the applicant presentation and the staff presentation. We want you to step up to the podium and give us your name and address. We want you to address the board, do not address the audience. I don't want any clapping, I don't want any heckling, I don't want anybody treated rudely here. Everybody gets treated with respect. And you have three minutes, our staff will time you, you have three minutes. And once that buzzer goes off, I want you to wrap it up. I did want to explain that the applicant does get more than three minutes. The applicant is not limited to three minutes, and that's because the burden of proof is on the applicant. So, a lot of people want to know why we let the applicant talk longer, that's why. We don't owe them an approval, they have to make their case. So, no back and forth to any audience, direct to the board, if you have questions, you can direct them to the board and we'll try to get them answered for you. We don't have a back and forth with the public speakers, we just listen to your testimony, and if you have questions, we'll try to get them answered later on in the meeting, and the board members can ask you questions as well. So, our first item on our agenda tonight is FCC-23-05, Zone Change Request from Location Acquisition, LLC with Technical Assistance from KLG Engineering for Property Within the Two Bridges Zoning District. A proposal would change the zoning on a parcel located at 7240 Highway 2 East near Columbia Falls from SAG-10 Suburban Agricultural to R1 Suburban Residential. The total acres involved in the request is approximately 12.44 acres, and we get a staff report, please.
Okay, so this is a request for a zoning map amendment on property located at 7240 Highway 2 East near Columbia Falls within the Two Bridges Zoning District. The proposed zone change would be from SAG-10 Suburban Agricultural to R1 Suburban Residential, and it is a 12.4 acre parcel. Properties in the surrounding area are a mixture of agricultural, single-family residential, public, and commercial uses. And the surrounding zoning consists of SAG-10 to the north and west, SAG-5 to the west, and then scenic corridor to the east and south. And nearby zoning designations within the jurisdiction of the city of Columbia Falls include C-SAG-10, which is also suburban agricultural, and C-SAG-5-5, CR-3 one-family residential, and CR-1 suburban residential. So, a handful of agency comments were received regarding this proposal. Environmental Health and the Flathead County Road and Bridge Department had no comments. BPA had no concerns. Columbia Falls Public Schools confirmed that bus service is available to the area and indicated no concerns. Comment received from Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks discussed the property's location within a complex of agricultural land along the Highway 2 corridor near the Bad Rock Wildlife Management Area, and the comment indicated concerns with impact of continued high-density development on the wildlife corridor. The letter states the subject's 12-acre parcel, this proposal is along the eastern periphery of this corridor, and its development alone will not likely result in appreciable impacts to wildlife movement across this broader area. And then the comment included some recommendations to mitigate potential impacts. And then MDT did submit a comment after the staff report was written, which just kind of indicated review may be required for future development of this parcel. And numerous written public comments have been received regarding the proposed zone change, and most of them came in when this proposal encompassed the adjacent properties as well. So, the application has been revised. But, and then two additional comments were received after the staff report was written, and copies of those comments have been provided to the board at tonight's meeting. The comments were opposed to the proposal and primarily addressed concerns regarding the proximity of the properties to the wildlife management area, wetlands, and the Flathead River, and impacts on wildlife and wildlife management, as well as safety concerns regarding increased traffic along the highway. Are there any questions for me?
Any questions? Thank you. Do we have an applicant presentation? Please give us your name and address.
Mark Rowieder, business address is 1830 South 3rd Avenue here in Kalasaw. Aaron, do you have that hesitation? I didn't get started yet. Again, my name is Mark Rowieder, I'm a civil engineer with KLG Engineering, and I'm here on behalf of location acquisitions in support of the zoning request from that SAG-10 to R1. And in order enough, I've got a really brief presentation about the zoning change. Just going to start off, the first two slides are really going to cover some of the, real briefly, the issues going on with housing here in the valley that we're all... These two slides are data from a presentation or a report that was done here recently. And it shows, the first slide here, it's just talking about the needs of housing. Or in last, oh, even back in the eighties through the two thousands, keeping up with the growth and demand for housing. Except for, say, the last 10 or 15 years.
Next slide.
Shows the last 10 years where we've slid, basically, from having a surplus now to a shortage of housing units here. This even happened before COVID hit in 2020. As Aaron pointed out, it's right there at the intersection of 206 and 2, basically just directly north of the water park. The project itself, or the property itself, has three structures on it, one of them is a single-family home. There's a well, septic system, and in the back, behind the buildings to the north and east, is an old pasture field, so it's grassland. And as you see in the photo there, or on the picture there, they do have access to Highway 2, it's in the very southwest corner of the property. This is another photo of what's around there, as we mentioned, it's SAG-10 on the west and north, and then we get into scenic corridor to the east and to the south. And immediately adjacent to the east is residential properties, and that transitions into commercial and even light industrial, and again, that, the water park directly south. This just gives you a little aerial view of kind of what it looks like out there. What I wanted to point out here is that we have done a wetland delineation on the site, and that 12.44 acres was all uplands, and the Corps of Engineers has provided a determination, they agree with the report and delineation on the site. We've also done a preliminary geotechnical investigation, and we did not observe any groundwater or any type of limiting layer, either bedrock six or eight plus feet below the surface. And the soils that we found on the site were conducive to stormwater management, wastewater treatment on site, and building homes and supporting infrastructure for the development. As Aaron alluded to, we understand that this is just one step in the process of the development. MDT will be involved with traffic, or potentially DEQ, DNRC, and Flathead County for water and sewer, and potentially subdivision with a county. So, we feel that the residential development will hit some of the goals in the growth policy. These are just a few of them, as we pointed out, that this potentially could add to the housing units here in the valley. The applicant understands that the surrounding properties, the use of that property continue, there's no issue with, we support the use of properties surrounding the zone change. And then finally, just support the property rights for all users around this property. So, that's really what I have today for a really brief support of the zone change. Do you have any questions?
I do have one question, you mentioned that wetlands, it was all designated upland, does that mean there's no wetlands on this piece of property?
Correct, there is no wetlands on this 12.44 acres. And as I said, the Corps of Engineers have reviewed the report and have provided their jurisdictional determination in concurrence with the report.
Anybody else have a question?
Some of those, some of those issues, if I may, of wetlands were, as Aaron pointed out, previously this project was much larger and went to the north, and so there was some wetlands in that northern part.
You mentioned something about six to eight feet, I think you said, before you hit bedrock.
Eight, didn't even hit bedrock, we went eight plus feet, we bore hole, we bore a hole in the lot, and we went eight, just over eight feet, and didn't hit any bedrock, we didn't find any isolation with ground one.
You're not saying it's bedrock under there, you're saying, that's not what you're saying.
It was just soil all the way down, it's...
It's river drainage?
Well, yeah, just, yeah, outwash, yeah. There's, basically, too, there's no limiting layer, at least eight plus feet below the surface of the property.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any public agencies in the room that want to comment, any public agencies? Okay, seeing done, we've reviewed our comments, our public comments, pretty well, our planning staff did. So, we're going to open this up now for anybody who wants to speak on this application, and if you do, please go to the podium and give us your name and address and address the board like I said earlier. Anybody want to speak on this application?
Hi, Nicole Bond, 150 Steel Drive, Columbia Falls, I'm an adjacent property owner. Did you receive a copy of a letter I submitted today? There would have been one for the original application, and then one that would have been submitted today for the revision.
What's your name again?
Nicole Bond, B-O-N-D.
I don't know if we have that one, we do have one from Laura Strong. And Henry Rivera, is there another one?
I didn't receive anything, there's nothing in the file, could have been sent to...
I did email it to the planning and zoning email this afternoon, I emailed it twice, because once the attachment was too large, the second time I attached the link for it as well. But I do have a hard copy of this. Just to give you a background, I am a planner by trade, I no longer practice, I was an AICP credential planner at one point. So, I'm pretty familiar with regulations. What I would like to point out is in her revised staff report, on page two, paragraph five, the general character of and reason for the amendment, it states the subject property is located near the intersection of Highway 2 and Highway 206, and is adjacent to the city of Columbia Falls interlocal agreement boundary, that is not correct. The former boundary that had been proposed was adjacent to the interlocal agreement area. Staff report, page 21, finding 12, goes down and states because the proposed zoning allows for similar uses to the adjacent city zoning. That's a binding, again, it is referring to adjacent city zones, not correct.
Now, where was that one at?
That is on page 21, finding 12. It states the proposed zoning amendment, map amendment, appears to be compatible with the zoning ordinance of the city of Columbia Falls because the proposed zoning allows for similar uses to the adjacent city zone. The property is not adjacent to any city zone. Additionally, this property is outside of that, I'm sorry, trying to get my bearings again. There is actually a little over 40 linear acres between the west edge of the subject property and the interlocal agreement zoning designation. Finding 12 in the supporting statement for the general character of falls, the adjacent property to the west is adjacent to the interlocal area, said property is not. I do have a highlighted map, and I'll give you a copy of all of that. I'm sorry I get seated my time, but I did submit this, I'm happy to go over all of the holes in the findings that actually, there are a number of issues with the findings in fact.
Could you hand out your, do you have to hand out your...
I have it right here, and I do have it via email, and I can show that I did email it twice today.
Is that the only copy you've got?
With me, but I'm happy to provide it. And I have it on my phone because I emailed it, so it'd be in the email as well.
Yeah, maybe we could get, I'd like to get a copy of your...
Of course.
Of your correspondence, maybe you could give that to the planning staff, have them copy it.
Zach Green said you go make some copies.
Because I want to make sure she has, in case we want to ask her a question. Thank you, we'll try to, we'll get a copy and we'll look it over.
Okay. The main request that I had was to hold off for tonight until things could be corrected, so that your staff report and your findings in fact would hold up in court. There's a number of issues, especially regarding the history of the property in the two zoning district, or the Two Bridges zoning area. That area was a citizen-zoned area, and it went to the state Supreme Court, and it was upheld. The county commissioners then, in 1988, implemented a county commissioner zoning of the same, a 10-acre minimum, so that they wouldn't run into that same thing. The property to the west had been owned by Jack Petty, he's the one that sued the county. He wanted to put in an RV park with one-acre minimums, and like I said, it went to the Supreme Court, the county prevailed. This area has a 50-year history of opposing anything other than the 10-acre minimum for that area. So, there's a lot of stuff that was not included that should have been, and it's also as part of the growth policy and the growth policy analysis documents.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak on this application?
My name is David Olditz, and I live about a thousand feet from this property that they're considering its development. And I have a good voice.
Still got to get it on.
Okay, anyway, and I sit there on my porch and take these pictures that I'm showing you there. And my issue is, the issue involving the Glacier National Park itself, which was, people had the foresight in that era to designate it that as a public use, and subsequent to that, about three or four million people a year kind of visit that park. So, my issue has to do with the view, and the view that I have, as you'll see in those pictures. And the fact, the value of that property is, has to do with the view, that's what attracts all these people to this area. And that's a view of this, this beautiful view of the Bad Rock Canyon, and the mountains in the bottom, in the back, I have names for them, I sit there and see the changing scene every night, it's different every night, it's always new. And that is the first introduction to the park from the visitors that come to this area and really support a lot of this for locally economy, the reason they come here. And you can see that view from three different locations, as you cross the bridge going east, you can see it, but you shouldn't stop at the bridge. The second one is the place where the East folks wanted to have a development that was in Columbia Falls. It's a good place to view that view of the Glacier Park, the gateway to the Glacier Park. And the third one is this one that we're talking about, the city, the second one, as I mentioned, was declined by the Columbia Falls City Council. Now, the people that previously owned that property, and it's 10 acres of property that I live on, were stopped from putting up signage having to do with produce, they sold produce, it's farming. And so they put up a sign having to do with produce, they were stopped by, I don't know, the government agency, from putting up the sign, they had to take their sign down. Because of the view, it, on the east, on the south side of that property, there's already development, what not taking place. That's a bit of a different issue, and not a very good view south. But the northern view is that wonderful view of the Bad Rock Canyon and the view into the park itself. And that shouldn't be disturbed, the zoning that is there right now is the appropriate zoning for that. Now, if the Coors folks that own this, have acquisitions, if they want to build a couple of houses on that property...
Can you wrap it up for us, David?
Was that?
Wrap it up for us?
Okay, I'm against this.
All right.
Basically, for those reasons that I suggest.
Is there anybody else who wants to speak on this application? Any else want to speak?
My name is Gary Hall, 140 Step Lane, Columbia Falls. I do sincerely thank you for your commitment to guiding the Flathead Valley through these difficult development proposals. Your work and attention to detail is appreciated. This development company, if you're aware, was recently unanimously turned down by Columbia Falls City Planning Board for developing rest of this proposal on 22 acres alongside of the Flathead River. I was buried in the details, but suffice it to say, it was poorly planned and completely out stepped with the community and the environment. The Columbia Falls City Council then denied the proposal. This developer tried to build 113 units ordering this property, but the seller did not want to sell to him, thankfully, and was able to stop the sale. Now, the same developer's proposing another 40 plan subdivision, it simply doesn't fit into the character of the area. They are proposing to change zoning from SAG-10 to R1, which is a huge leap, maybe SAG-5, but not R1. With recent Centerville 382, one house per acre will allow for 80 U units, which actually is two units per acre, and not 12 septic, but now 24. Plus, my concern is those 24 septic's will be draining toward the river. Topography directory goes downhill to the river, please take this under consideration. I see this as plain and simple, a meat frog development, which is illegal. I want to make you aware of something that transpired while this developer was proposing to build next to the river. He hired an economist, which was mentioned earlier, out of Missoula, who stated Flathead Valley needs 20,000 units by 2030. He also stated that he does not view affordable housing, but attainable housing. I bring that to your attention simply to make you aware, this developer is not trying to enhance our valley with decent housing options, it is to make the most money he can from his out-of-state riders. Building for in-migration is not in our best interest. Yes, development will happen, but you have the final say. Lastly, Galton County has recently discovered that after allowing too many developers into their area, they now have to do a $33 million upgrade on their sewer capacity, and they don't have the money. A newspaper stated they may have to limit the amount of tourists that come into the area. Lastly, this developer also stated he is building for in-migration people, not local. S10 to R1 is too much for an ask for this area, please consider denying this zoning.
Thank you.
My name is Shirley Folkwine, I live at 285 Shilling Star Drive, Columbia Falls, and I'm representing the Upper Flathead Neighborhood Association. Thank you for the opportunity for us to express our concerns about this zone change. We oppose this zone change as it is proposed. We are a nonprofit with a constituency of over 100 property owners in and around Columbia Falls, mostly to the south and the east of town. We, many of us are the senior property owners in this area and stand to be the most affected by this zone change and development. We acknowledge growth and support sensible growth. We also promote protection of natural resources, water quality, bird and wildlife habitat, and rural landscapes. And this is a significant aspect of this 12.4 acres. We trust that the county planning board and the staff have visited this property and have a clear understanding of the boundaries, the proximity to agricultural lands, to this 772-acre Bad Rock Canyon Wildlife Management Area, the critical wildlife habitat, wildlife corridor, and the safety issues regarding egress and ingress from Highway 2 to this property. We urge you to pay close attention to the information provided to you by those of us who have lived near this property and visited neighboring properties, some of us for over 60 years. We are aware of the wildlife movement patterns throughout the year and on and near this property, including elk, deer, mountain lion, and the frequent removal of problem grizzly bears in the neighborhood. We're very aware of the traffic density and the safety, which is a big issue here. The current access is extremely dangerous when pulling out onto the highway with heavy traffic speeding around the curve at Columbia Heights and down the hill. This property is hydrologically connected to the Flathead River, and multiple septic systems on the property will potentially affect the river. In 2021, an expert hydrogeologist studied the soil and groundwater at a subdivision one-half mile west, and results predicted that the effluent from those septic systems will flow straight to the river. It likely would be no different here if this rezone leads to 10 to 20 homes built on the property with individual systems. My parents were involved in the development of the Two Bridges Zoning District 50 years ago that Ms. Bond spoke of. The intention was to maintain this area as open space agricultural land. That zoning has not changed in 50 years, and now is not the time to make that change. A zone change is the beginning of a slippery slope leading to all-out development. There are already incidents of water shortage on neighboring properties, so additional wells could be a problem there.
Can you wrap it up for us, Shirley, quickly?
Yes, I'm right now at the very bottom here. And because of these concerns, we oppose this zoning amendment from SAG-10 to R1, we could support a change to SAG-5. And thank you all for your volunteer service.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Fred Hawes, I live at 4188 Columbia Falls Stage Road, and I cannot add anything that Gary and Shirley have not already added in imposing this zone change, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ivan Hayes, 160 Nicholas Avenue, Columbia Falls, Montana. And I also oppose and agree with everything else that's been said, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak? Yes.
Hi, James Dragstein, 4196 Columbia Falls Stage, Montana. And I want to thank you guys for being here, everybody who showed up to these meetings. I know it takes a lot out of your time and it's a lot out of everybody's time to come to these, and I know the valley is growing like crazy, everybody wants to move here. But I think we need to do it sensible and smart, and not just put developments wherever we want. I'm for increasing housing, but this is not a very good location. The same developer tried passing the development right out of Columbia Falls and was rejected thankfully, and he's trying to do the same thing. He's just all about money and not for the community, so, and I can't add anything else other than what everybody else has said, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Glenn Waite, I live at 267 Rogers Road, Columbia Falls. I'm opposed to this zoning change for a couple of reasons. None of which is, looking at the map, the way the property is located and the access of this property, it might surprise the board to know that, to find out that I'm a motorcycle rider. And there's a, there's a turn coming up from the heights, coming down into Columbia Falls there, where the speed limit is 55 miles an hour. That access to that property makes it very tenuous, I suppose, for traffic coming in and out of that area, for motorcycles and other traffic coming along that corner coming down into Columbia Falls. That's, that's the first, it's a 55 mile an hour speed limit, and sometimes, at least some motorcycle riders I know ride with exuberance. So, the speed limit is sometimes not adhered to. But that being said, there's also, I've seen all too often as a motorcycle rider, people trying to use that intersection there, that center turn lane, just before the intersection of 206 and Route 2, as their own personal U-turn. of two oh six and Route two as their own personal U-turn lane. And that also provides a very hazardous potential for, for traffic coming in both directions. The traffic coming out of that particular development, should it be approved, would also not be able to, in my mind, be able to turn left. They could only turn right coming out of that subdivision, which would also provide a possible hazardous situation if they decided not to turn left, no, not to turn right coming out of that subdivision because of the, its proximity to the, to the intersection of two oh six itself. So I'm wholly opposed to it and thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak on this application?
My name's Holly Ford and I actually reside here in Callistow, but I have a home off a track road that I raised my kids from nineteen eighty-one until they blew the mast. So I still have that house and I love that area. I love the city of Columbia Falls and I think the city does not, or the people of Columbia Falls do not want this development. It's not going to be affordable housing for the people that need it. It's going to be a high-end housing. I'm concerned about the wildlife corridor that goes through there. There are many other places to build, but this is not the place to build the development. And, um, thank you. And I totally agree with everybody else that's spoken before me.
Thank you. Anybody else who would like to speak? Anyone else? Third and final call for anybody who wants to speak. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Does the applicant have any rebuttal?
Thank you. So, thank you for those concerns and I'd like to just kind of address those as, as I heard them. The first one was about the view of the area and location acquisitions does take that very seriously. They choose to build that, taking into the surrounding, surroundings of their developments and try to blend in with those, with those developments. This property is also, if you've been out that way as you head east down Highway two, the property comes off Highway two and you drop down into the property. So it's below Highway, US Highway two as you head up that, head towards Glacier National Park. The issue with housing, this will add units to the, to the market here, not a lot, but at least some. And the units will be available to all. People here in the valley that are looking for homes and people that are coming to the valley looking for homes, professionals, families, whoever. So there's no, there's no limit of who can build or occupy these homes. The traffic issue, that's why one of those next steps would be to involvement of MPT. Once we have a design set up in the, on this property, then we would know what the actual traffic increase would be on that and we could submit a traffic impact study to MPT and then potentially go further down the road. For septic systems, yes, one, one option is individual treatment systems. There's also the option of combining and collecting the wastewater from this facility and doing one treatment facility and doing an advanced system that would treat the water at a much higher level than twelve or twenty-four, whatever these number of septic systems would be on that site. So that is an option. And wells, again, we'd have to go through, most unlikely, go through DNRC and DEQ if it comes down to like, say, a community system for all of the homes in the, in the development. That's what I have. If there's any other additional questions?
Thank you. We'll see if any board members have questions when we get the board discussion.
Thank you.
Does staff have any rebuttal? Okay, we're going to move on here. Let's see, I'm wondering, I wonder if we ought to take a few time out here to read this? Everybody's long, want to read this long information, what do you think?
Well, yeah, it's probably that, can anybody hear me? I don't want to whisper into my buddy here. Now, we've had this problem before, somebody submits testimony at the last minute and that always presents a problem.
Can you speak into the mic? Can you speak into the mic?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
You may regret it. I'll repeat it. Yeah, when we get last minute information here, it always causes a big problem for the board, so we try to discourage that. You know, sometimes we get reams of information dumped on us as the meeting starts and it just creates a big problem. This particular information that we're concerned with here, Mr. Larson, seems to me to be the fact that there may be some corrections necessary to the findings. If there are, we can make those tonight if we wish. Or we could table until we have a chance to decide what we're going to do. What my, the first, the first couple of objections to the findings, I didn't think were material. They were more in the order of housekeeping changes. What I was considering was making a motion to accept the findings of fact. With the understanding then that probably we would have to possibly revise the findings before we approve them, which would necessitate taking short recess in order to review those. Alternatively, we could table it until we have time for a review to adjust the findings if necessary. So I don't know exactly what to do. I could make that motion or you could take a recess so we can review this. And I don't know how many discrepancies in the findings there were, but although we have a large agenda tonight, we can correct findings of fact if we wish.
Yeah, that was good, Greg. I, and I don't want to make it sound like we don't want to accept information the night of the hearing. We absolutely, people have the right to do that. It does make it a little difficult on us. From my perspective, I kind of like to table because it gives me a chance to really study. It's difficult when you have six projects and you're trying to read something in two minutes and then trying to maybe address findings because I need to sit down and think about what the finding says and then kind of look at the, the information we have. And Nicole put it together a pretty, looks like a pretty nice job here. I haven't had a chance to read it yet, but I would like to read it. I, I think we're better off to table this thing, come back with it. We come back in a month with it and we make our decision. We close the public hearing, there's no more public hearing on it, and that's typically what we do if we get additional information that I think deserves a fair amount of time to look at for each board member. I also like to, if I think I need to change a finding, then I just sit down by myself at my desk and then try to work that. I hate to work Smith and Reddick in a meeting on the spur of the moment. It just doesn't work very well. So I would make a motion and we table this till next month.
I'll second it.
There's no discussion on the table, so can we get a roll call, please?
Brad Stevens?
Yes.
Gary Motopka?
Yes.
Beth Brackenridge?
Yes.
Jeff Larson?
Yes.
Fidel Jackson?
Yes.
San Genovo?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. So this will be table till next month's meeting, probably first on the agenda. The board will take that board discussion and then we'll act on the, on the application. So just so you guys know, and we scheduled for then, but thank you guys for being here tonight and appreciate it.
Oh, Mr. Larson, I just make one comment. When we table something, then that stops all flow of information. We can't accept any more letters or any more testimony or anything. That puts everything on hold, so.
That was my question, whether or not you would allow more information. No, we, we have to decide on what we have ourselves. All right. But if that moves forward past our planning board, the commissioners could get additional information. But information that we, we look at is what we've got to know. Is a commissioners' meeting a public meeting? Yes, it is. Where we can give. Yep. And they will have, they will have a public hearing, but have to get from us to them personally. That won't happen till next month. We'll make, we'll make a recommendation to them. We'll be either in favor or opposed to this and then that's when you can give information to commissioners too. Because we're in the same position. We don't know what's going to happen until he comes here and see what's going on. Exactly. Yeah, we're, we're not as knowledgeable as you are. And I don't know either one of them for sure. And we're not as shy of it. Hey, thank you. Thank you, guys.